I just want to ask for one o'clock. So, let's call a meeting in order.
Can you turn your recorder on now?
I turned it on at one o'clock.
Okay.
Forty-five seconds ago.
That's when it went on.
Alright, okay. Termination of the form, number two, and we do have a full form here, so all of us are here. We do have a form. And I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, second.
Okay. Move. Move by L. Second by Thor. With the agenda, any questions? Oh.
Hi, how are you guys?
Okay, October seventeenth minutes. Oh, I thought it was... Yeah, move by L and second by Thor. Oh, I just asked the first question. Okay, anybody, no questions? All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from October seventeenth. Yeah, I didn't get a copy of the minutes from October seventeenth. Anybody else? Okay, minutes on a... No, somebody else had been in the minutes of that meeting, I guess. Started with the little group at the council meeting. I hadn't seen myself. I was not secretary for that meeting. I couldn't see it. Joe, did you take... I might have an input on my computer though, remind me.
Can I take it up?
Is your secretary in the room? Get up on your hands. Is Heather your secretary?
You stood in the open case, yeah. I'll be back when... All I got from once you just be standing right above where you're sitting. Okay, there.
Can I go grab my laptop?
Sure.
Minutes created by... The biscuit. Yeah, actually Mark, he's hoping to remember. He's giving the minutes. Did you know it's late?
Okay. So what she says is, you know, following us up next meeting, so she should attach the...
Will attach both.
And the agenda.
I was on the way around here.
Okay. Well?
Or circumventing out the process. So we can look at it or...
I'll make a motion to table approval of the minutes. Your second?
Second.
Motion carries, second by L. We will approve the minutes from October seventeenth. We'll take that up at the next meeting. Any questions for him? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, updates. Mark? Oh. Alright, um, since the last meeting, I contacted the city about some of the old broadcasting equipment that we had here from the N-Law days. And I got a list of all the equipment owned by the city. I, as it came in the back door there, I've been putting it all back there. It's obsolete, and we're gonna have the city take back their equipment, and they're free to do with what they need to do with it. It's no longer usable here, so it was just taking up space, and therefore, we didn't really need it here any longer. As far as on the station, with programming, I'm... We're picking up some new shows, and we're also renewing some past shows that I'm working on. Later today, I've got a meeting with some people about renewing the show, bringing that back as a regular... We're looking probably at a monthly thing. Because your health matters.
Okay.
With the St. Aggers. We finished the soundproofing of our studio with some insulation over the Christmas... Between Christmas and New Year's, I was on the ladder most of the time, installing insulation up there. It's really been an effective soundproofing for our studio. Also, been doing a lot of contacting of local organizations, the nonprofits, not businesses, but the organizations in town that are able to use our carousel system to announce their meetings, and just events, announcements, and stuff on our community access portion of the channel. We've got like new ones running, well, rerunning. We finally got a hold of Crane Meadows, the Friends of Crane Meadows. There's about eight new ones we've got back.
Wow.
That used to be always on here as a regular basis. I've been contacting them, checking their contact information, make sure it's accurate before we run it on the station. And slowly, they're responding back. We've got the chamber is really coming in, submitting a lot of things for us. So hopefully, it's a more informative station of events happening in the city and the Falls area. That's really all I have. So do you run that on the character generator so that it kinda keeps going on and on and on? Yeah, that's on character generator. I call it the carousel, because that's the...
Oh, okay.
My term... Their terminology, the type of media systems terminology for it, so...
Okay.
But yeah, exactly the same thing. Do you have any questions? No. Well, it sounds good. It's, uh, making pretty good progress for... It's been a long, very long. We're also working to do some adjustments in this actual room here, where if we have a larger studio production, you might have noticed it's been kind of tidied up here. The back wall here, it used to be a part of a studio that Jerry would film at. So I'm getting that ready in case we need to film a larger production. We've got a larger room than our studio. That has some limitations in space. If the group gets over four people, it gets a little cramped in there. Whereas here, we've got space that can go a long ways. Good, sounds good. Any other questions, or...
I hope the furnace doesn't kick in.
Well, when we're filming, we have to turn that off. It's like events in the main gallery too, that furnace gets turned off so it doesn't interrupt. So do you get any calls from the public about any thing that they're concerned about? Or... Any problems or anything, or any... Nothing significant, no. Okay. Sometimes I would like to know what Charter has for viewership, you know, but I don't know how I can access that information. You know, like a Nielsen rating of how many people are watching the channel. That would be helpful, I think. But, um, we don't get that information apparently. Yeah, Charter isn't very good for doing that, so... But maybe that'll change. We'll wait and see. Okay? Turn that off. I don't know, I fight for this.
Turn this off.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, turn... Do you hear anything?
I haven't.
Just have to talk to the volunteer. Mark, how about high school? What's happening out there?
Uh, well, this year, we've been able to work out a partnership with Falls Radio where they're occasionally will pick up their live feed of the athletic units or hockey, James Ruscini, Jamie Petticale, Jamie Roybaldson, actually Mike, their announcers. So that we have the same feed that goes out on the radio. What we don't have is, you know, they obviously advertise under the radio. We don't have that, because we're finding them at the arena. All the advertisement stuff happens back at the actual station where those get mixed in by the broadcast engineer. But that's been a really good valuable partnership for us. Sometimes we are just taking, it's either Jamie Ruscini or Cory Fink. Sometimes it's just them, or sometimes it's the damn and one of our students. And so we're giving our kids an opportunity to work alongside a professional, and that's a really great opportunity for them. We have, uh, we have some technical difficulties. Our modulator, similar to the one that Mark has here, that sends a signal down to Charter is failing. And so rather, and that's one of those pieces of equipment that there's question over. It's a Charter's piece of equipment, or it's going to the city, it doesn't belong to me. Whose is it? We just want the channel to work, so we've spent the money... We decided to spend the money and order the modulator to give it so that we can send that good signal back out again. Rather than try to wait for an agreement to be reached, not only do that, but even... So we're hoping that we're going to plug in the voice of the new modulator. We're hoping that by doing that, it will help to improve the signal quality somewhat. What comes back, that will increase. That should play me in by that work at places. So I need to play that in. We can do this all. Well, in that, we've had a busy winter season with telecasts. Tonight's band choir concert. We had hockey last week. Hockey again Thursday night. Basketball on Friday night. It's been good two athletic events a week through this winter season. We can have a third broadcast tonight.
Do you want to tell them a little bit about what happened with the MSBA in Minneapolis?
So we were asked by the Minnesota School Board Association to come down and show how our kids can do live broadcasts from anywhere. And so we did that. We pulled our little trailer down to the convention center in Minneapolis. Had it all set up. We did two live shows. One was with Integrity Group here in town and TSP Architectural Friends, which they were talking with Steve Jones about the referendum where things are at in the construction process. Construction progress. Two words on my... And the second show featured a panel of people from the executive director of the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, the executive director of the Minnesota School Board Association, the executive director of the Minnesota Rural Education Association, and the director of regional programs for national joint powers. And the president of the National School Board Association who performed panel on the future of education. That we had two of our students moderate. These students that we took down for the day to moderate this panel. The students had developed the questions and asked the questions. They did a great job. So we've been, we recorded that down there. We livestreamed it on the web. And then we got back here, we aired it back. It's part of what we're scheduled for us to do. That was a really unique opportunity for our kids. They had to work in a live environment. They had to troubleshoot on the spot. We had two members of the panel that were late coming. We didn't do audio checks with them. We just had to throw a mic on and go. And the battery was dead on the microphone panels. We had to communicate with them. How are we gonna change your battery? How did everybody see what's going on? It was interesting. It was a really great experience for the kids. So we had four kids, two kids doing the moderating, and we took four kids down to do the technical. So there was a lot of interest and a lot of school board members who were on the street after what's happened.
Anything else? I would encourage that, if you have a chance to take a look at the trailer that I've set up for the local broadcasting. It's weird, and really neat thing. It looks just like a big bus type thing that you see outside of, like, say Williams Arena with the CBS Sports type thing. With all these little monitors in there, and a director in there. They can direct the group, shoot to any camera they want. Now that MSBA, there was 2,000 school board members, superintendents of schools, teachers, State Department of Education people, all sorts of education from around the state of Minnesota. And we were able to block five students' presentation and get a book of things. And that was really a good advertising for our school restricted cable station. And we're doing Little Falls for broadcasting to the residents of Little Falls. I was watching part of it, and I was telling her for that, for the... Google Poodles. First word. And first Little Falls itself. Thank you. Everybody have any questions?
No.
Any other questions? Okay. Alright, um, number six. Old business update on finance franchise renewal. John?
So after the last meeting, I contacted, or have been in contact emails back and forth with Bob Bowes. We, he had a new team of franchise renewers from Charter. So the law firm that he was working with is now out. They contracted with them, and Charter hired their own attorneys that are going to be working on the franchise renewals. So it's been an effort to bring them up to speed. As part of the Charter's team, there was a new government relations person that came on. They leave last fall. His name was Tom Bordwell. Well, he replaced Leanne Herrera, who had been with Charter for quite some time. At least had record of interaction with her for a long time here. Well, Tom has now left, so now there's a new person in that. So there was, in Bob's terms, now there's a new new team. So it's bringing them more up to speed with our issues with the franchise agreement, and hopefully, they're working on getting that to the level where Charter can approve it. I think our issues, we came to a pretty good conclusion at the end of our negotiations with the previous team of what, where our stance was and what Charter's stance was going to be with the franchise. Now it's just, I think, getting that new team on board with those same. They haven't made any requests of us to make any modifications, as far as I'm aware, but...
Did Bob indicate any kind of a, maybe...
A timeline?
Timeline, or what?
No, I did not get a reaction from him on that. I can follow up, but certainly hasn't.
Oh, you might... Next time you get a chance to talk to him, just come. See if he figures something else out that maybe you can have some more information for April seventeenth.
So that's, that's the end of it. Unfortunately, it's more of the same.
Like, late the same. Should be getting it done pretty soon.
Still years, and I mean... I mean, I think that my initial reaction would probably tend to be a little bit too much. That's why I hesitate to talk. But I'm at the point where, you know, I would be on board with telling them to shut the stuff off. I mean, they're operating without an agreement and don't seem interested in resolving this. I don't know, but probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 households off the top of my head, give or take.
Yeah, based on the PEG fee revenue, which is the consistent monthly subscribers of 50 cents, we're hitting just under 1,000, so it's pretty close to 2,000.
So...
I don't think legally you would have...
1,000 people calling down there saying, where's my cable? Maybe they'd be a little bit more inclined to put a priority on this.
One of the things that Federal Communications, FCA?
FCC.
FCC. They've given the cable companies pretty good leeway. And, uh, like, we don't really... I have too much, too much of a leg to stand on, but we just have to keep plugging away, I guess, but... It's a slow process.
What else is out there? I don't even know who they are. We're not doing anything. We're just sitting dormant. They throw in new, they renovate their team. Bring out a new team of management people.
Right.
Then we get slow.
Somebody's talking to somebody, right?
And then they change.
I, uh, I reached out to them about this, and they're... I don't know about their interest in doing a franchise-type work here. It's, it's that, it's a lot of upfront expense, which the rate of return on that investment is not great. So what's happening at the state level is there's, there's been legislation on broadband initiatives and getting high-speed access, high-speed internet available to much, you know, broader parts of the state, especially those that were, you know, either completely unserved or very, very underserved in terms of this level of speed. Well, because of our technical service that we have with Charter and CenturyLink and Potentius and others, we don't quite equal those thresholds. They did make a little bit of change to that last year and upped the, what you needed to be to be designated as underserved. So they made the standard higher, so it made more people eligible to access the funds. So if there was an interest from CTC to go after those and they could build out other parts of territory that's near them, then it might make it more financially feasible for them to have franchise. However, those grants are competitive, and there is only, the funding level isn't significant. So their, their scoring of those grants are for the worst of the worst. Like, those that don't have any access to high-speed internet at all, they're gonna score the highest. But those are the most expensive projects that have the least rate of return. So it isn't like it would take a significant portion of money to get that balance for CTC or somebody else to bring in high-speed fiber to simulate Little Falls. But it's still, it's not financially feasible for ours to bear the total number of customers that we have to do in this level of construction that we have to build to make it happen. They've dealt a lot with those in Madison, for example, here, because we were actually served by a co-op that served the entire county with five, the entire rural province, the entire county. They only did that because they got grant through the distributives projects, the air projects that had to do us, not me. They actually had to take out Madison from that grant application because they would have, they wouldn't have qualified for the funds that they kept from Madison. So we're at this point of service because we technically had, you know, we had a franchise agreement with the cable company. And the cable company advertised speeds that were such that that would have taken them to qualify for Madison. So, so it's kind of sort of a lot. It's great for them, and they would love to serve us, but they know, based on their, the dollars that it cost them to put it in, they have pretty good accurate numbers to that of what it would be. Just the financials, to do a hot and cold, without some sort of issues or... They need to get conversion rate, which is the charter provider built theirs.
Do you have any idea what Sytec is usually, as far as putting another polydiam fiber? My lake home is over by us now.
CTC?
No, this is Sytec. Five seven three men, they plow fiber right into my cab right now. And you hook up any, and, uh, and it's just wonderful. It's the lake home.
They have it, they have it on the salt side of Lake Sham, too. It's all seasonal with fiber in there.
There had to be some federal brands that were available to them. To do this, and anything that's on the five seven three exchange is, right now, it's faster than fast. Whatever you want. And they're putting in the internet service besides the phone service. So it's centered for that.
Yeah, that might...
And very competitive as far as price compared to what I've had.
Well, and that's the thing. It's like they come in and do it, but then if they, if they need to get the return that they need on their investment, it may not be, it may not be put right ahead of course. They're not gonna do something.
Well, they were kind of leader back in the day. They used to haul fiber for the midstate. Started out of obsolete cooperate. And all the fiber, all the way to Anemia, all the way to here and there. Now it's stuff we're using here even.
Co-op's way ahead of the game.
Yeah. And now they've changed their name to Sytec. And I just use it for a phone out there as a landline. But now, wow, we move out there, this is the place for them to do. But no TV service. Not providing a TV. I think they're saying if you got a smart TV and you wanna do the Hula and Netflix and whatever else, and get a dish or a...
Yeah, I think you get a high-def antenna.
You can do that for locals, yeah.
They reach, uh, you need, for out there, you're probably gonna need a very expensive one.
Yes. Might be better off just going through a dish or whatever the other one is. I've got that. I take the thirty-nine, forty-dollar package and hook that in. So it's gonna be, that's what I'm gonna be dealing with in the next couple of months.
I'm certain that they're doing it to make that funny. Outside funny.
They plow this fiber for two years out there. I mean, out in the middle, no.
And that's what, yeah, that's been a little bit of the rub from in the legislature of the use of these dollars. There's some that are very, very adamant that they need to go to the least served because if we're not gonna use these dollars now for the least served, they're never...
But the return on those dollars is weak, man.
And others that are, well, we need to get ninety-nine point nine percent of the state with the service and hit the areas that are woah-hanging fruit, so to speak. It doesn't take a lot of additional subsidy.
Power companies did.
Investment.
They said, sure, we'll provide you power, but from the main road, you have to pay for your hookup all the way in. So that could be a mile or two. I know a farmer, or a guy, built a house out by Bolus, and he ended up putting in a ten thousand dollar generator, generating his own electricity, because he couldn't pay for the, realize paying for that dollar amount to get electricity. Isn't that crazy? What happened to REA, where everybody got? Who knows? Money talks.
This universal service connection that they, for telephone electricity back in early 1990s, they don't imply like they should today.
So what we're saying here is where we're at is we haven't got a leg to stand on, a window to throw it out of, the proverbial pocket to go in. What could we do? We can't say stop serving us.
I mean, I have asked, you know, I did ask Bob that question. It's like, what, what should we do? What, you know, what's our, what's our action? He's responsive, basically, just wait, wait for them to move, because other, nothing's really changing at this point.
And nothing is changing. They're not putting any demands on us, and...
We're not in a...
Not hearing ours, so...
Flaring obvious detrimental position right now.
Status quo is the position to be in, so...
They're the, they're the moving party and they need to take the, they need to, they need to be the movers.
Yeah, okay. So, we just, there's no statute of limitations. I know there is on murder and things like that. Obviously, not on this. It just keeps going on and on.
Is that garbage, right, contract that goes?
Yeah, well, at least we contract with somebody. There's other bidders besides them for our garbage. We don't even have anybody to bid against these bonds.
That's a whole different story, so...
That's a different, that's a different meaning.
Yeah, well, I, with all the murders, I haven't been able to keep up. I mean, I don't even know who the other providers are. I mean, the doctor...
Basically, in, oh, yeah, in this community, the only other corporate provider is CenturyLink unless you have the satellite.
Yeah. Yeah, CenturyLink partners with Dish, no, with Direct TV. And then they provide the high-speed internet and the telephone service.
Well, that's how they do it. See, there's a lot of these partnerships jumping in.
The cable companies that are out there, I mean, unless somebody's going to come and buy this specific territory from Charter.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I don't even know what's open. Charter Comcast Cable Vision, I mean... Well, how could you buy from Charter? Because they have an explosive agreement to service this area? Or they're, right now, they don't, do they? Because we don't have a contract with them.
Well, and the franchise, I think, is, as they've legally said, is as long as nothing has violated the con- the previous franchise agreement, they can continue following the terms of the franchise agreement.
In other words, the date means nothing on the termination date of the contract. We would have to get a good lawyer to say cease and desist if we don't have a...
And then it's, well, yeah, and then for us, it's what's our alternative. It's what we've said. It's, it's not paying. So, then it just shuts off and then our two thousand customers are without a provider. And we can't, you know, but we can't access the schools' channel or our channel. That goes away. So, that's the catch twenty-two.
Our bargaining position is slim.
They need them. They don't need us then.
Well, and I don't imagine they're going to change their stance of, unless we're legally obligated, we're not going to participate. So, they have to know exactly what they need to do, like the, like the...
And they've been continuing to pay the, the pay fees and the franchise fees.
Right, and they're providing the service and... As long as they're getting their dollar, they're, they're pretty happy with the deal. We're just not getting anything new out of our new agreement, which we sat down and worked out so hard. Oh, goodness.
Well, I think we've exhausted that.
Yeah, I also do.
Let's go on to, uh, new business. Does anybody have any new business that they'd like to?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. I contacted the city of St. Cloud, their clerk, and they had about the same timeline that Little Falls did with their contract. They signed a new contract with Spectrum Charter on May fourth, two thousand fifteen, before their contract expired. In one of their city council meetings, they were, Spectrum Charter at the time was found in violation of the agreement. And currently, this city, and I have reported this to John Rodamacher, is in violation of the Minnesota statute, which states, it's number two-three-eight-point-one-one-five. And before I go to the state auditor's office with this, because I've already spoken to them, they mentioned to me that if the city is in violation of a Minnesota statute, they may step in. So, I want to report this to this board. This statute says, "A cable communication system holding a franchise to provide cable communication services in any area of this state must immediately provide a consumer complaint telephone number to any person who calls the system or its agent and asks for a consumer complaint number. The number provided must be the telephone number of a person or agency that is unaffiliated with the cable communication system and that is organized to provide assistance to complaining consumers." So, currently, this city is in violation of the Minnesota statute and the city is...
How are they in violation of?
What's that?
How are they in violation of?
Well, there is no such number. When I contacted John Rodamacher, city administrator, he contacted Charter, Spectrum, to find out the telephone number. The statute reads, "The phone number must be unaffiliated with cable communication system and, and that is organized to provide assistance to complaining consumers." This city is also in violation of another statute that says cable systems, this is the FCC now, "Cable systems with a thousand or more subscribers are required to maintain certain documents in a public inspection file." We have almost two, in excess of two thousand consumers here, so this statute applies. This is a federal law. "These documents include a political programming file, sponsorship identification, EEO reports, commercial records for children's programming, leased access requirements, proof of performance tests, and signal leakage and repair logs. These are available for public inspection and copying. In addition, systems must have a current copy of Part seventy-six of the Commission rules, which cover cable television." The city has not that either. And Charter, Spectrum is in violation of, the city is actually in violation of an ordinance that says they have to have a current franchise agreement in order to allow a communications company to do business within the city. So, with every possible capacity, this city is violating all of those statutes. I am really concerned about this and I, I don't understand if the city of St. Cloud could and did with their legal assistance, which we have had a legal advisor, Bob Vos, for since two thousand and twelve, if they could get this passed with numerous public hearings, I did ask about that to the clerk, and he said, yes, they had their public hearings before they entered negotiations. I've asked that of this committee and of this city, August eighth of last year, to have a public hearing before negotiations were even entered into, which is also what it says in our franchise agreement and in the FCC rules. That also hasn't been done. Why hasn't this city called a public hearing? So, people like me who have concerns, who want to be heard at a public hearing, can be.
What's your concern? What do you expect to get out of this?
Well, I just stated three different things right there.
Do you think we're going to get better service or what's going to happen?
I just, I just stated three things.
I heard you, and I wonder how many other cities are in compliance who are running the same program? Did you check on that? Is St. Cloud compliant?
Well, I, I know that, I know that our closest neighbor, I, I didn't check them.
Well, I know. I don't know either. Is this a bad thing we're looking at? Are they going to do something to us?
If the city of St. Cloud, well, first of all, you have teeth. There is teeth in this. This, the council could find Charter in violation of code, okay? That's what St. Cloud did.
Yeah.
In order to get them to comply, to get them to the bargaining table, to get this passed. If St. Cloud could do it, why can't we? Why haven't we?
Well, I think we have a backup plan is the problem, right? And I read the article, St. Cloud just about, if I remember reading it correctly, came really close to bouncing Charter, but they probably have another viable option.
Right, they had somebody to step in. They had competing companies down there at one time providing services. We don't have anybody. We have nobody. Nobody wants to come in and do this.
There's no, there's no clause that says that's acceptable under the law. You can't use as an excuse. I'm sorry.
It's going to be acceptable to me as a user of the service.
But what matters is the law.
I don't want you to shut me down because of technicality.
What matters is our laws, correct? Isn't that why we have laws?
There's a law on the books, still on the books. It says, "When you get to the intersection with your vehicle, you have to stop and get out, get into the middle of the intersection and look both ways before you can get back in your vehicle and proceed through." It's very outdated, don't you think? We don't do that anymore, but it's still on the books.
It has no bearing or relevancy to what we're talking about. The city has been in violation of this, the city has been in violation of this for more than a year and a half.
Okay.
And there's no plan in going forward to get it finalized and get us protected. Right now, as a consumer, we have zero protection.
You've been sitting at meetings.
We've been trying to get this finalized since, since six months before the, before the franchise fee expired. We've been working on trying to get this finalized for a new franchise fee and all these things worked out.
Has anyone from this committee contacted the city of St. Cloud, their clerk, and asked how they were able to do this?
No. Thousand customers is a different story than twenty-two thousand.
Might, might have warranted your time, though, to contact them, ask committee members representing the city.
We're, we're, this is a volunteer committee. We don't get paid for anything.
I don't either. I don't either, but I took my time to find out. I have a copy, I have a copy of their, their contract right here. Why could they do it, but we couldn't? I think it's a, an obligation of this committee to work better on behalf of the citizens, including myself as a consumer, to get this finished, to work on this, to be that diligent. A council member who used to sit on this committee didn't even take the time to call St. Cloud. None of you have. I don't, I doubt if John Rodamacher has. I don't understand that.
We went through that. You remember a few meetings ago, we went through that when they settled and before they settled and what they were doing, and we didn't seem to be able to put anything together like they were putting things together. I don't, it's not like we haven't done anything.
We've been relying on our, on our lawyer, Bob Vos.
No, you haven't been. He, he advised this committee what to do. He advised this committee back more than a year, it was three and a half years ago, four and a half years ago.
He's never sat in with this committee.
Yes, then, then you, you were given the same...
I've been doing this for years and I've never met the man.
You were given the same copy of the same letter that I have in my possession that says, he recommend, Bob Vos recommended in two thousand and twelve, which was three years before the expiration of the contract, which was last May of fifteen, that you immediately hold public hearings, a public hearing, because that's part of the law. This committee and the city council did nothing.
And what would the public hearing have done other than getting our lawyer to go on and settle the contract?
The public hearing, it states right in that letter, gives teeth, gives extra, um, uh, when the public has input, that gives better negotiating power to the city. That's what that letter states.
Well...
And it's not an option. It is a mandate. It is a law that you have to call a public hearing. When I spoke at this meeting back in August, John?
Yeah, who's doing this?
Does the city council call a public hearing?
Look at the letter from Bob Vos. It states right in there.
What did it say?
I can't, I can't recall, but I did tell, I did ask John Rodamacher at this last meeting, August eighth of two thousand sixteen, if there would be a public hearing before negotiations were entered into with Spectrum, and he stated, yes. That has not been done, and yet the city is working on negotiations with Spectrum currently. It is wrong to not call a public hearing that is mandated by law.
Right, so this could be something that could be done, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Just call it, set up a date, post it, and who shows, shows. And if there's some good input, wonderful. That sounds easy enough to do.
And nothing changes.
And nothing changes. That's what I'm saying, but it'll follow the rule of the law.
What they're legally obligated to provide, nothing more, nothing less, then that's going to be the end of it.
Exactly, exactly. And if we can find somebody in our community who has some information or some knowledge or some moxie to get this going, then that would be fine. I'd be wonderful. That'd be a wonderful point for that person and, and me. As an individual, if I find somebody who could come in here and get this accomplished.
Well, the city is obligated to call the public hearing.
Well, yeah, right, but we're just looking for this public person. That's what I want to see.
What do you need a public person for? Consumers of, consumers of spectrum television and will come to this meeting if they care enough.
That's right.
There's at least one other person in this community that's concerned enough to have written a data request for the same information I've been digging for.
So, is it possible to put on the city council's agenda to, uh, put, post out that there's going to be a public hearing in the garden?
We could do that probably best for the March sixth meeting at the earliest.
And who would officiate this?
It's just called open public hearing, take the comments, you know, record them.
Just have a recorder there to?
Call it's the public hearing. It's just part of the, we have public hearing all the time.
Sure.
Okay.
Fun issues.
So, can we recommend that to the council? Is that, we can do that as a table board?
Okay.
All right, let's do this.
So, under, under new business?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we recommend a public hearing about the franchise agreement with Charter on the renewal.
Have a public hearing and Robin and the one other person she knows of will show up.
Any other questions? Anybody have any questions about that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, this is fine, right? It can't, since only the public who is going to be interested are required to be there. It's just an open meeting.
Don't have to require to be there.
That's, well, we should have somebody, somebody should be providing information or taking notes or doing something.
A signing roster for everybody, so you know who's coming for the...
Okay.
The standard procedure is that they, they need to address the podium and give the name.
And the public hearing will have to be publicized in the local newspaper as well.
Yeah, that's your protocol with the public hearings.
By March sixth, that'll give enough time to do that, so...
Give a vote.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to?
Aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
Yep. The motion carries.
Okay. Is that a recommendation of the councilman?
Let them take it for now. All right. Well, it's a step forward maybe, I don't know. We'll see. It's a step. Okay, so the next meeting date then for us will be, um, April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. It's a Monday, and I'll be here at the... So, anybody have any questions or comments about that? Okay, a motion for adjournment?
Aye.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, sir.
Thank you.